The Mont Placent Public School Board of Education regular meeting on August 5, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. This meeting of the Mont Placent Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public, but it's not a meeting of the public. There is a time of public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed after these meetings or presented to the board for discussions. As a part of this evening, please turn up a sound and self-proportionate and stand for our speaker.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to read our Indigenous and Indigenous statements. Mont Placent Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Indigenous people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Indigenous people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation. And we have got a room with the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since standing memorial and whose land on which the scientific knowledge of a white Indian tribe has resided and who has continued to reside down a century. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. As a board member, we have agreed to educational governance agreements, which headers are the following: professionalism, respect and equity, inclusive collaboration, responsibility to afford looking vision, dedication to community engagements, and a commitment to continue this group. It's possibly going to be our vocal.
Amy Barnes here.
Lillian Pango here.
Tabby Wodker here.
Lawrence Isaac-Monti here.
Nathan Thompson here.
Jessica Jordan here.
Katie Rook here. You can get ready. Our first order of business is to approve our agenda. I need a motion, that's one.
So who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that moves us to our superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. The first item on our report this evening is just a discussion that we wanted to have regarding the MASP conference and the delegate assembly, which will happen on Thursday, October 24. If you recall, we missed this deadline last year, and we don't want to miss it again this year. So we're extra early. And so we're just going to have a brief discussion about an hour and then, under new business, we would ask that you would appoint, we want to appoint up to two, Kevin, is that right? Up to three delegates. So it really sort of also then leads nicely into the conversation about the conference and about who plans to attend. It is time that we can start registration for that process. And the conference is, it begins Thursday evening, October 24. And then our session at the conference is Saturday morning, October 26 at 10 a.m. So I guess that's something that I think a lot of board members know already, that you're going to, you're planning to be there on Thursday, and that may help us appoint our delegates for the Thursday night delegate assembly. So I'll just sort of open the conversation there.
I was hoping that someone that has been a delegate can maybe walk the rest of us through what does that mean?
We will have, we will be presented by the Business Association School Board about three weeks in advance, a guide of the policies that the association has and any modifications to those policies that will be presented at this session, at this session, on this Thursday evening. So we'll have a chance to read all of that beforehand and discuss anything that, if there's anything that we would like to change. Or we've all received emails, if there's anything that we would like to add to those policies changes, we can do that also. But on Thursday, only delegates will be allowed to be in a voting area. Each one of the policies will go through a very Robert's Rules of Order structure to have them presented to the membership who are voting on. There are sometimes bylaw modifications, sometimes policy modifications, sometimes new policies, and sometimes a rule of a policy. But those will all be presented to the greater membership at least a month in advance. And it's pretty much just voting on those policies. It is very Robert's Rules of Order structure. They have a parliamentarian, and they follow very specific procedures. Part of it is because there's, what, 300 people there, all voting. Most of the votes are by verbal. You can comment, much like we do in our Robert's Rules, on any one of them. There's a process and a microphone for everyone to have the opportunity to speak to each of the modifications. And then they'll do a verbal vote. If they cannot determine a verbal vote, then they will do a hand count vote. It usually takes, I think the shortest one is an hour, and the longest one is four hours, that I've been through. That's pretty much it.
Amy, do you want to add anything to that?
No, that was, that was a really good summary, I would say, of what it is. And it's, I think the fact that we do get everything beforehand is a very easy, you know, experience of being there.
So I know it's a ways out to board members who know sort of what your plans are as far as the conference. I could kind of run down the road and give just a general idea of the plans to attend.
My plan is to attend, and I could be there on Thursday night if, if need be. I'd be happy to be there, but I also don't want to take the experience there from somebody else who might really be hoping to, so I could be either, go either way.
I had a nice experience, for those of us that may have not gone, the conference is weighted with more stuff at the beginning. And so it kind of peers out and the last, so it goes from Thursday to Sunday, and Sunday is where you only passes. And so for those of you considering when to attend, the bulk of the sessions are at the beginning. I'm the same as Amy, I'm happy to do it. I can be there on Thursday night, I don't need to by any means. And so if we have folks that would rather, I'm happy not to.
I will not be able to be there on Thursday. It is too close to the November elections for me to be there on Thursday. So I am planning on being there on Saturday, at least Saturday at this point. So someone else can take those risks.
I have a question about it. This is separate from the conference where there's a presentation involved from multiple schools. Is this the same thing or is there a difference?
This, this, this delegate assembly is an event at the conference. So the conference is Thursday, Friday, Saturday, even into Sunday. Our presentation is at this same conference on Saturday.
There are classes you can take through MASP that start actually Wednesday, I think.
Thursday?
All day long, there are classes that you can take. Friday, there's classes. In the evening, Saturday, there's classes in the evenings. And then Sunday, all day, there are classes that you can take. So it's kind of intertwined amongst the different components of it. But it's not like sessions and all that kind of stuff. It's more of you have to register for the classes at a time. There's credits, right, and all that kind of stuff.
The sessions are, there's classes and sessions, right?
Not on Thursday?
No, on Thursday, it's just classes. Sessions are only Friday and Saturday nights. And so, and then Sunday are classes. So, and I think, so if you were to attend the whole event, Wednesday night, classes, Thursday, classes, Friday, sessions, Saturday, sessions, Sunday, classes. But if you are planning on like just going for the purpose of the conference, really being there Friday, sessions, Saturday, sessions, you would attend, you could attend everything if you didn't want to do the additional classes. Like that's what we pay for when you go to the conference, right, the sessions.
Okay. Well, I am available through declaration, so someone might be attending, can you be honest? I have planned on taking classes beginning and the end, staying the whole thing.
Are you willing to be a delegate?
Oh.
Yes, I will be a delegate. I'm willing to be a delegate as well.
That's good, because I can't be there Thursday. I'd like to be there Friday, Saturday. Unfortunately, I cannot. I have a senior this year, and he has the priority of cross-country and all that kind of stuff. But I'm going to miss hearing especially our, our session.
So then out of the board members for delegates for Thursday night, we have Amy, Lillian, Melissa, and Nathan, that would be possibilities. And out of the board, we can select three. Is that right, Kevin?
Yes. And you can also have alternates, so if something, if something happens, whoever that fourth person is can step in.
Okay. So we could select three board members to be our delegates, and then the fourth person to be an alternate in case one of the three, because it is a little ways out, and we know that the plans can change, so.
I like that idea. I also would suggest, when we make that appointment under new business, that priority be given to anyone that hasn't done it once, so that he spreads that knowledge.
Right.
And that's a whole board become working.
So Kevin and I will follow up with emails, so we can get specific information and start to get folks registered for the conference sessions. And that will be a campaign and, if you want to, you can. Anything else about the MASP conference?
Maybe I'll just add, so for folks, it's a, it's a great time to take classes. And so what I suggest is in the next couple of weeks, before we start registration, look at the schedule of classes, what interests you, so that we can do it all at once. And we avoid, I'm Kevin, the last minute, oh, I didn't notice. The other thing I didn't realize is there is an incentive for us as a whole board to have, all of us, most of us, having taken all the 100 of the classes. I think, again, it's kind of the same thing, having as a collective more knowledge is good. Or maybe we, you know, can set up either a table or something, so we tell each other what, what classes we're taking. So there's two approaches, right? We all get our 100 levels done. And out of the way, we strategize and split them up, so that together as a whole, we at least, we're covering most of those. And so think about that, check the schedule, it's out. And then you can pay attention to when those classes are, because at the beginning, I wasn't. And I didn't realize that some of them were like Sunday night, very, very good. And I don't know if we can, right, at the time, it was hard for me to commit for four days. And so you can check the timing and make decisions based on that.
The next item on our report is a continuation of our policy review, although we are going to shift just a little bit this evening. As I shared with you recently, we received Trune's policy update. And so this evening, what I really was hoping we could focus on is the new Title IX policy. This policy is structured different than, differently, I should say, than any of the other policies that we have. It is brand new, so Policy 3115. And then what you'll notice in the documentation that I sent to you, there's Policy 3115. And then after that, there's Policies 3115A through H that go into different specifics. So the whole series of this policy is about 35 pages, which is pretty heavy and, and a lot. So I wanted to, to give you a general overview of this policy with the disclaimer that I myself am very much still learning all of this. Linda will have some key roles in this process for our district, as she has currently. And so we're both going through the training process along with other staff members. But let me, let me just give you a little bit of background information. I did attend the first training, which is required in order to, to have certain roles. So you have to have staff members that are, have a very specific training, and you have to have every employee has to have a more generalized training. So the second series of the trainings for folks that are going to be in key roles happens on August 20. But between now and then, we really need to have this policy in place. So these are new regulations that technically speaking went into effect on August 1. So we're even a little bit out of date by doing this on August 1. But I knew it would be geologizing for us to get a board meeting in between. These policies apply to all P12 school districts in the country. And there are some exceptions, and you will hear some schools that do not have to follow the regulations, I should say, public schools, based on a couple of court injunctions. Fortunately, or unfortunately, depending on how you look at that, we are not a district that falls under those exceptions. So from this point forward, we do need to follow these new regulations. So there's basically three things that we need to do. We need to, first of all, adopt this policy so that we're compliant with the new regulations. Second of all, we need to train the folks, like I mentioned, so that we can have the key roles in this process. And then third of all, we have to make sure that all of our staff have a basic and general understanding of, of the changes. So essentially, the changes to Title IX broaden our jurisdiction as a school district. They include specific, it includes specific language focused on discrimination based on someone being pregnant, based on their sexual orientation, or based on gender identity. So those are the three areas where this policy expands and where the regulations expand. What is still the same for us is that all staff members are still obligated to report. As we go through and do, conduct an investigation regarding a Title IX complaint, there is still a presumption of the person being accused of not being responsible for that behavior. So we are still obligated to conduct an unbiased investigation. There are still limitations on student removal as we go through this process. So student removal would be where there is a complaint from one student to another student, and you, family or district may be tempted to say, well, we're going to remove the student that the complaint is against while we investigate. There's still limitations on what we can do and how we can do that. There are strict training requirements, and then also very strict record retention requirements. And I think that that's what they're seeing across the country, is in these kind of complaints, maybe things don't come up again for many years, and then records have not been happened. So that's why there's this longer requirement. And then we, as a school district, have a liability for failing to respond promptly and appropriately to any complaint. In the previous regulations, a complaint did need to be written, sent in written format. But these new requirements, a complaint can be a football complaint as well. So it gives, it makes it a little bit easier, I guess, for someone to lobby a complaint officially against someone else. So the key roles are the coordinator, Title IX coordinator, the Title IX investigator, and the Title IX decision maker. And you'll notice as we go through the policies, fortunately, Linda Boyd holds a lot of these roles. You are, we're not, I mean, I'm with it, it's okay. You are allowed to have the same person be a coordinator, an investigator, and a decision maker. In fact, the person that is the decision maker has to have a role in the investigation. So if someone else conducted the investigation, and Linda came in as the decision maker and wasn't involved in the investigation, she would have to start all over and do her own investigation. So she needs to be a part of the investigation. The other folks in our district that will go through the training that will be able to help us with these roles are Stephanie Beiner and Matt Waltersak. Both Stephanie and Matt have been in these roles previously. So it's just a matter of getting them trained in, in the new, the new process. There has to be an appeals officer designated, and that person is me. So since I am in that role, it makes my participation in some of the investigating and decision making a little different. I have to remove myself from that in case there is an appeal. Although I can be the coordinator, but we just, we've got all those positions with Linda, seems to flow better. They also have what's called an informal resolution facilitator. So that's someone that can help gather information, help with the investigation. And we really have, all of our building administrators are sort of charged to be in that role and help support us there. And then we also have folks that are responsible for offering supportive measures. So you'll notice there's a whole section in Policy, respectively, financially, it's Policy 3115C, and that goes through all of the supportive measures that we would offer. So depending on where we are in the process, supportive measures can be offered at any time. But so we have to have folks that are able to facilitate those supportive measures. And again, that would be anyone that is on the administrative team. One of the things that's really important through this process is that we are not issuing any sort of discipline until we've completed the entire process. So that goes back to that student removal piece and that assumption that the person that's being, that the complaint is against is not, you know, being, said that they're, and being trying to be very careful to not use legal phrases, because we are certainly not a court of law. But we want to make sure that we're not settling someone accountable until we've completed the whole process, so. And then all the way through, we offer, when we offer supportive measures, it's our responsibility to make sure that we're documenting everything that we've offered very carefully for students and for families. The only time that we would do a student removal would be in the case of an urgency. And if that was the case, we would then be following our student threat identification process and our threat assessment process that would be separate from the Title IX complaint. But that would be the only time that we would look at a student removal. There are strict timelines that are laid out in the policies. I know you all have read them, so I'm trying to not, you know, go through bit by bit. The decision maker then must be involved in the interview investigation process. And the, the standard is based on evidence or proof. So when you talk about different legal standards, our standard for making decisions has to be based on the evidence or the proof that is gathered during the investigation process. So again, it's, we are not a court of law, right? And that, that's, and we don't want to be, we're not trained in these, so. All employees must be trained on the Title IX guidelines. And we do have a 10-minute training video that was created by Trune that will be a part of our training videos that all district employees will do at the beginning of the year. So as you know, every year, we do training videos on things like bloodwork pathogens, concussion protocols. There, there are different harassment-type videos that we've watched over the years. We will watch this specific one that was specifically created by Trune to make sure that we are compliant with the new Title IX guidelines this year. And it's just a 10-minute video, so that we will have record that every employee, they do, they do this independently on their own time on a computer, and then we'll have that record. And then there'll be additional training for building administrators, and then again, for the folks that are in those specific roles. So the policies, again, go through a series of definitions. They look at, so we're publicly designating who our coordinators are. It defines supportive measures in the process. It goes through the grievance process. It goes through the process of complaint dismissals or appeals. And then there are additional specific requirements a little bit later in the policies to prevent discrimination against those specific individuals that I mentioned earlier based on pregnancy, based on sexual, gender identity and sexual orientation. So there's specific information that applies to those specific individuals. So it is a lot of information. I, I think that the policies, I appreciate that they're written in a way that is a step-by-step format, so that when we find ourselves in the middle of a complaint, we have a resource to go to, so that we can follow that, to say, no, these are the steps that we have to take. This is what we have to do. And then certainly, Trune is always available to us, you know, for additional supportive needed. So I don't know, Linda, if there's anything that you can think of to add to it. I know the, the earlier policy is going to say unless we didn't have those roles identified, but we did add them in. I will say, the very last page, you go all the way to the very last page, there is a sample of a non-discrimination notice. So if the board approves these policies, then we'll be able to put that notice on our website, in our handbooks. That policy, or I'm sorry, that notice that needs to be publicly posted has had multiple changes over the years. And so we always want to make sure that we're as compliant as possible. So Trune did give us this model policy, or I'm sorry, this model statement that will post on everything if the board approves these policies. So I'll do the best that I can to answer any questions, should, do you have any?
I don't. This isn't really a question, you know, it's a question. I'm assuming that this is used pretty closely to relevant laws, in terms of how it's written?
I, I would say it's textbook, although I, I've not spent a lot of time reading the relevant law, because this in and of itself is a lot. So, but I, trusting Trune like I do, yes, I would say it is an accurate reflection of the law.
And I do know that this has been long in coming, and it's been through a lot of iterations, a lot of conversations at every level of education. And so it's not a surprise, right? So because of all of that, it is actually really fine-toothed, come close to law because of some of the changes. And some, what I find interesting about this is usually policies don't have administrative guidelines tied into the policy. For this, it has a lot of the step-by-step, which usually we see in administrative guidelines. That's one reason why it's 35 pages long, because usually it's two pages for the statement, and then the guidelines have all the procedures. But I think most of you, that this is important enough to investigate. But I, I have a question. This is a lot. How are we going to educate our students that these are their rights? Especially at the high school handbook, which is seven, seven pages long. How do we make this connection to know that they have these abilities and experiences?
So I don't know that we have a solid plan in place today, but I know that's something that our administrative team will be talking about when we get together next week. What, you know, how can we chunk this up in a way that's understandable? That students know that they have rights, that they know that we're here to support them through that. And my, personally, I envision a lot of posters, a lot of things through our OSF throughout the year, so that it's bit by bit, students understand that they have rights, and they understand who they go to. I think the same thing would be the case of making sure that our staff understand, and so that our staff are well versed when a student does come to them with a concern, that they know what their responsibility is, so that they can support their students through that.
Is it also true that this is, applies to our staff also?
Absolutely, yeah.
So this is not just a student?
Correct.
This is a district-wide for everyone?
Yes.
In the district, our employee and our students?
Absolutely.
It's, it's possible that some of the organizations involved in that, or I shouldn't say that, we already have some guidance about how to communicate these changes.
Sure, sure.
Good point.
And that's something that we can look into. I think the, the fact that Trune provided a training video for employees is a great step in the right direction, so it's not something that we had to go online on our own. They, you know, they gave that right way to us, so that we can get that ready for everyone.
Is that something that you could share with us, so we can see what you're hearing?
I think so, or through the faculty journal. Oh, yeah, yes.
And then do you, and does it specifically highlight those changes? I mean, I know you just did it for us, but also that the employees, everyone might start to understand the shift in the Title IX, and especially adding these three specific sections that they might not realize.
I know, yeah. Definitely.
My, my second question is kind of related, and I put it in our review document, so that we can deal with it now, is the training part. And so you answered the first part, so everybody gets 10 minutes. Did Trune provide the additional training for building administrators that might have special roles?
So, yes, so that, that's a training that, that, of all the time, so it's a three-hour training. So they've got several dates throughout the, you know, the next two months. And I believe the one that we're going to do then is August 20. So we'll all do that together, myself, Stephanie, Linda, and Matt. I just, there was one last week that I was able to do that I thought, well. You, you can't hear these things too many times, really, you know? So the more that we're able to work together and communicate with that. So, yeah, they will do that, and then Trune, that, or the four of us will work together to help train, to give additional support and training to our administrators. So there is really anything, Trune offers, it's a three-hour training for folks in those key roles. And then it's the 10-minute training for everybody, and there really isn't anything in between. But our building administrators need more than the 10 minutes, than that, with the three hours, so that will be on us to make sure they're well informed.
To be honest, we do this almost every year. So if you look at our website, the PowerPoint from Trune, September 23.
So if you look at our website, the PowerPoint from TRU in September 23, 2023 is there with my certificate, Jennifer's and Stephanie's, but this update is a little more significant than previous years and much closer, closely tied to the policy.
And the really added is that I don't have to post our certificates anymore.
Oh, really?
Well, we used to, people, they're all posted there, we used to have to, but they took like that requirement, and of all the things to change.
Can board members fit in on that training if they want to?
I think so.
Yeah, I know.
Let me verify that. There's a B, of course, but let me verify that.
Thank you.
Just for clarification in my head, the designated Title IX coordinator is Linda, the designated Section 504 coordinator is Linda, and the designated Civil Rights Coordinator and Employment Compliance Officer is Linda. The, so she will receive this three-hour training along with Stephanie, by your, and Matt Wolterszak will also be trained.
And me.
Yes, and the Appeal Officer, which is you.
Yes.
And then you will bring that back to inform the building administrators because they are the information revolution.
Yes, yeah. Folks. Yeah, I'll do that right for you also. They are the informal resolution facilitators. So Linda, Matt, and Stephanie could be, well, Linda's the coordinator, Matt and Stephanie could be an investigator or a decision maker, but ultimately Linda is the decision maker. So really Stephanie and Matt have the additional training so that they can be the investigator.
Okay. And then you all will be bringing that back to the building administrators, and staff will be getting a 10-minute training video provided by TRU.
Yes.
And then we're working on a conversation about how students will be informed.
Right. Yes, that's accurate.
I have a vague recollection, and so I don't quite recall, but in depth, as of your role in HR, if someone does have an issue with you, and hopefully it's not the case, but how do we let people know who, that Matt and Stephanie are available as kind of?
So it's, it says right on Policy 3115B, which I can try to get to that page, but it says that a complaint against one of the coordinators listed above, which in our case is Linda, may be made to the superintendent or the board president. A complaint against the superintendent may be made to the board president, and a complaint against the board president may be made to the board vice president. So it's clearly spelled out in the policy.
That makes perfect sense. My boundary is on the notice that, that, do you see what I mean? So I think we had some, my memory is fuzzy, is that our old notice had something added in case, because it's Linda's name on everything, in case people want to communicate to someone else.
Oh, you mean?
And so, and that last notice that got added page, something, there's no page numbers, at the very bottom. And so I was looking for that sentence there.
Yeah.
So I agree with you, super clear in the policies.
Yeah, we can tweak that, and that's just a draft that they put together for us. I think always before that, they were very specific that we needed to have a male and a female person that was trained at the coordinate, but now it's not, it does quite yet specific and longer, but, yeah, we can make sure that that's included on our notice that would go out in several places.
Thank you. I got a standing for having read the old one back then. That was actually one of my very first board meetings when I joined this Title IX. I felt like while it was long, it was clear language, it afforded me no choice to switch to TRU, and I felt like it was manageable, it was clearly stated kind of what we can say, like kind of what you do next, and it didn't feel quite as overwhelming as my memory of our policy, and so I feel like it's more digestible, I like that it was very clear on the definition, including things that concerned, and maybe it wasn't there before, I don't remember, and so that I felt, while heavy, easier to process.
I did, to Tim's point, I did really like that they have the definitions right here. So it seems there are particularly a lot of the gray area for a situation where there can be quite a gray.
I had another general question, and it might be just my ignorance, so how we do this, I remember maybe us talking about mandated reporters, a mandatory reporters, and I didn't find it in there, and I don't know if it was in another policy, in other sets, or if that is one of the changes they made, and then, so who is a mandatory reporter, I mean, all pieces of mandatory reporters, which is my memory, but?
Yeah, we are definitely all mandatory reporters.
I think that this change in law just changed at the college level as well.
Yeah, and so I just, I don't remember now, and I just want to make sure we are here, and then it's here and there.
Yeah, I think the change at the college level was, at the college level, people who weren't mandatory reporters before are mandatory reporters again.
Yep.
So I'm guessing that?
Yeah, and so that's, that's not a change for us, we've always been?
Right.
Mandatory reporters.
I tried to control fine, and I don't know if it's my computer, but it isn't, and you need, well, you know what, maybe I didn't?
Terminology, for some reason, I don't know if they use that exact same terminology within Title IX, like we would for a child abuse or neglect, but I think it's clear in the training that, for example, they are very firm on any staff to student is absolutely never okay, and that is, and in fact, I think this new law gives even a timeline for if a staff witnesses any type of, they use the shortcut T9, if fraction, that if they, like 24 hours to report, but I don't think they use that term mandatory reporter.
So I just, in the training videos, I'm sorry, the training slides, what hasn't changed, the very first bullet, all staff have reporting obligations, so it's in this training, not that I have, but I don't know.
So it must be just, because when you put mandatory reporter, nothing comes up, but I think my control fine is not working in there, but they might just change, not call it this way.
So they're not mandatory reporters.
Yeah. As long as it, I mean, really, what matters, right, is the training video that that's crystal clear.
And I can, I can go through this, you know, I can never find the words under pressure, but I can go back through it to find where that is and send that to you all, just so you can see that, but we do every year go through, and, you know, Linda, speaking of the Child Protective Services mandatory report, we make sure that our buildings have that training every year as well, where this is similar but different, but that's always been our obligation to report, that's not something that's new.
That was my only question.
Does anyone have other questions? So if there aren't any, and if board members feel like, feel comfortable with that, under new business, we would ask that you approve just this set of policies, 3115, 3115 H8H, this evening, so that we can get that in place, and then you may notice that I started to add in all the other policy changes into a policy folder, not quite ready to present all of that yet, and I got sort of sidetracked with this one, thinking that this was the most important, the most timely that we get together for everyone else.
If we don't go through one by one and pulling up our documents, and then making sure that we didn't have other questions, I think we've answered them all besides lactation. Nathan and I both had a question on the lactation, which is 3115G. They're small questions. Nathan, you want to go first, so I can, I'm happy to start it.
You can start it.
The only request I had is, and again, if it ties up our approval, I am happy to, it's not a deal where you can approve, so I can approve without changing my language because I know, but maybe put it in on our radar, is to add that the lactation space located in a reasonably close location, and so there's nothing indicating where, and I know that's something that we've discussed before, is making sure, and I know our building administrators, if requested for lactation space, we do our best to make it accessible, and so that for future references, making sure it's a policy is something that will make you feel better, and Nathan, you had something kind of similar.
Mine was just about, is, how is it going to be labeled? Is the room going to be specifically labeled that way, or would just be a, I don't know?
So, in past experience, there's, I've seen folks put a sign up on a space, like, you know, that indicates it was close at that time, or that hurts.
But it wouldn't necessarily be where there was a label.
Not all the time, no, that is.
Okay.
So are there, need more of a small, multi-purpose space? Multi-purpose, like a smaller, multi-purpose space, right?
I think my only other part of that was just how, not that I wanted to be monitored necessarily, how will be secure for students especially?
For someone to feel safe using this space anytime, maybe then, is that what you're after?
Yes.
I mean, it does say in the policy right here that it's free from intrusion from others.
So, I don't know, in my head, I'm envisioning it would get swapped by this to has a key or something, right? Is that reasonable?
I would think so.
Would you be okay, Nathan, going forward? I guess we can wait with this.
Yeah, I'm okay going forward, it's just those questions that came up. Based on the policy, do you have to provide storage space for a person?
So you mean like if someone has a nursing home and then needs storage?
Yes, like they weren't necessarily breastfeeding, but they were looking to store, does the school have to provide space for that?
I mean, it's not specifically laid out in this policy, but it makes sense.
Talking about equipment storage, milk storage?
Like refrigeration.
Refrigeration.
To me, when I feel like the policy clearly states that you have to support, and so that could be part of the supporting measures, right, and so something that is, that is mitigated between the students and whoever does supporting measures, should have building
I think, I would just ask that we clearly spell it out in the policy and add our own language if we need to, so that a student doesn't have to ask these questions or feel like they, so it's already done.
So would it be possible, again, given the situation that we're in, if we looked at possibly potentially approving these policies this evening, so that they're in place to meet the timeline requirements?
Yes, yes.
And then working on A2 and 3115G to add some specific language?
Yes, yeah, I'm not saying.
Yeah, yeah, so I agree.
I feel the same way, I think it's, I don't know, we can revisit.
I did, I did find, just before we started talking, in 3115H, where it looks at the training requirements, it does say, so 3115A, 1, B, C, and D, that clearly lays out the obligations for all employees, that they're obligated to notify the Title IX coordinator when they have information that may constitute discrimination. They also are obligated to provide the complaint contact information for the Title IX coordinator. So I think there, right there is that obligation, it's maybe not phrased in the same way that we're used to seeing it, but I was actually able to find that there, so.
Well, thank you. The obligation to notify is basically the same thing as mandatory reporter, they're just switching language.
That makes sense. Thank you for finding that.
Any other questions on this policy or process?
That was it, we don't, we answered them all.
Yeah, I appreciate your fast response. So let's end them on our, where is just the DEI task force, the application.
Yeah, we wrapped up our second year of DEI task force. In June, you offered the annual report of recommendations to the superboard, and so we have opened up our application process again. We welcome any community member that is willing to contribute. The application has a big spiel at the beginning, just so that we could make sure, to be as transparent as we could about what the requirements, not requirements, but the commitment, I guess is a better word, the key part is that we do meet in person the fourth Monday of every month as much as we can, if it doesn't conflict with a holiday, that's, so Monday night, 6:30 to 8:00, and the application has a few questions. If it seems daunting, we want to make sure that everybody knows you are welcome to record those answers as either videos or sound bites and submit those instead, and so we make that clear as well in our application process, but we do welcome all, I think the task force is stronger in, you know, when we have a wide diversity of community members. Our thought for the timeline is to have August be the month where everybody can apply, we'll close the application early September. It works well too, because we feel like parents look, or parents or family members, community members look at the stuff that comes home at the beginning of the year, and so that's going to be one piece of the information, and then I give to folks about a week, right, once we all started to apply. As a board, we can look at all applicants, we had a very transparent rubric that we used in prior years, if we have more applicants that we can add, and if that's the case, we can just use a rubric, that way we're not making decisions that are biased, and then we wrapped up those community members to start, and the first meeting would be the fourth Monday of September, and so that gives them a few weeks to turn around and get organized. Any questions?
How many applicants are you looking for?
I mean, to, especially now that we've restructured our task force in a way that is a little productive, so at the beginning, we didn't quite know what our role was, it took us a little bit of time. I really think the more the earlier, I think it enriches the conversation. Currently, well, so ideally, we have half, we have always on our task force members that are either staff members or administrative, that are part of the administration, which is good because they're needed in part of that conversation, so he's having as many, so that is that what's there, which is what we've been doing so far, which means about 10 people from the community, we have about 10 administrators or staff members that contribute, roughly, and about 10 current community members, I've heard for about half of them interested in staying, and so that we need at least five new folks, but.
So not everybody has to reapply?
If you're?
You're in on the people who are, are in on, we're getting people to fill the rest?
Yeah, the idea is to kind of have a rolling mechanism so that not everybody is brand new each year, and if someone does find that's been part of the task force and wants to stay, we welcome them to stay, they don't have to reapply, so that would be for new community members, thanks for this, for making it clear.
So when we say early September, what again?
Well, so last year, we, in my memory, we closed it on September 1st, but then we got a few late organizers to apply, and we accepted them even late.
So we can publicize that September 1st is our deadline, but we can be flexible again?
We're just, you know, happy to welcome anyone interested as much as we can.
Okay.
Anything, go ahead.
Do you post the rubric? You said it was a public rubric for the decision-making, do you post that with the application?
We haven't. We've read it when we created it, so it is publicly, was publicly available. I don't have a problem posting it, and so maybe we could post it. We have a DEI task force website, and so there's a lot of information there, what we do, the types of questions we've addressed, who was on it this last year, so that's actually a good point, you should say that. I'm not used to having a website, it's very new, and so maybe one of the documents we can add to the website is the rubric, and so, again, we have nothing to hide, and it's very fine to have it up there. We'll just have to remember to do that.
I agree.
Thank you. Thank you.
The application process, so you have a website, so are people here will apply via the website? Or do they have to like email somebody a letter, or?
It's just, it's a Google form, so, um, after this discussion this evening, we'll make sure that it gets sent out, I'll make sure that it's in building newsletters, and, um, we just were kind of going back and forth to make sure that it was updated appropriately and do that somehow, it will be shared widely after this evening's discussion.
Would we be able to put an additional link on our DEI website, so that it's also there in case people don't find it on newsletters or whatnot? Awesome, thank you.
Anything else on the DEI Task Force application?
Thank you.
That's all for our report.
Thank you, Jennifer. That moves us to course comments, we didn't have any in the last period, nor do we have any citizens' requests to address our board tonight. So that was us for our consent, the gems after the night. Our first consent item is the approval of the minutes of the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. All right, let me open our correct folder as we move to our new business. First under new business is our M A S B delegates, um, that we have to approve. So we had a conversation already, and, um, we can discuss this further.
I would be happy to be the alternate, and if the three of you would like to take the primary, um, since you guys expressed interest in attending, um, and then I can step in if anybody is unable to make it culturally.
Thank you, Amy. And so if I remember, that would be Melissa, Nathan, and I as primary, and then Amy would be the alternate if one of us can't make it. So some, so that would be the motion that we can make.
I, I note that we approve that slate.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, it's easy. Uh, our second is the train policy approval for policies thirty-one fifteen A through H.
And also thirty-one fifteen.
Oh, yeah, thirty-one fifteen, yep.
And then thirty-one fifteen A through H.
Do we have to do them all by one, or we can do that pre-done before?
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
For the policies that we did, we did. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everyone. And then the understanding is that at some point, we'll revisit the, um, whatever that was, H, something, the adaptation, G, yeah, G, thank you. All right, that moves us to our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, um, present practical student handbooks.
In your work packet, uh, you have for the last couple of weeks, the student handbooks for all the Mount Pleasant Public School buildings. We're asking this evening that you approve these student handbooks for Gannett Elementary, Horn Elementary, Bowles Elementary, Fancher Elementary, McGuire Elementary, Mount Pleasant Middle School, Mount Pleasant High School, and the Mount Pleasant Public Schools Transportation Department for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Uh, you will notice that the Always is Alternative Education Program handbook is not there. That is something that they are still working on, and they will be joining us at our next board meeting on August nineteenth to go through the program, to talk about their handbook, and to talk about all the great things that they have planned there. So this evening, we're asking that you approve the other handbooks, um, effective August fifth, but then they will go into effect for the start of this.
Um, I'd like to, um, see, so I feel the same way as we do for policies, where I understand the need to have handbooks approved, so that you can go into, uh, and implement that through the school year. I'd like us to, um, however, come back and maybe in conjunction with our administration, making sure it stays a collaborative process, and it is a document as opposed to a true document, uh, and then take the time to actually, um, go through more closely than we can do in one evening. And so, I'm okay moving forward, but I'd like as a motion that we make sure we, we make a commitment to coming back to the handbooks. My suggestion is we wait until we're done with policies, and then once our policies are done, we move on to handbooks, maybe do trucks at a time, someone that was smaller than others. Uh, I'm guessing the high school, the middle school is where we spend the majority of our time, and make sure that it's at meetings where those administrators will be coming anyway, so maybe we stash that schedule. So that would be my, my suggestion for us to move forward.
And that would be a point that I would just add, that we will invite all of our building administrators to come to present to us their board meetings throughout the year. The high school and middle school will be here once a trimester, and then all the other buildings will be here at least once throughout the year, so that would be nicely to have their new adversities that are here with us.
I would second what you said, at some point. Is the, the middle school and high school, is that on online?
Yes.
Whether they're all those places?
Yes, yeah. Yes.
So I, we need a motion to approve the handbooks with the caveat that we're gonna revisit them throughout the school year.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody, and I appreciate the commitment, because I know that's gonna take time. Um, and so I, I appreciate all of your dedication. Next on our agenda is our Sex Ed Advisory Board co-chair appointment.
Hopefully have the memo that, um, asked for board approval for Christina Hug and the medical professional, representing the Sex Ed Advisory Board co-chair, and then Sean Larson and Gabe Nathan, kind of co-co-chairs, um, sharing that role at the Sex Ed Advisory Board, um, the health teacher component of that role.
Tim, as the Sex Ed Advisory Board, do you have someone for our board? Do you have anything you want to add for context, or it would be good?
Just to share that out, so people understand, Christina was the vice chair, or co-chair for, um, three years, four years, for a good chunk of time. And the, it's Sex Ed Advisory Board, all of them know about this appointment, and they all agree to this appointment and the structure of having Christina as the, um, the non-staff, and then have Sean and Gabe as the staff co-chairs of that. So people understand a little better, the staff component, um, does a lot of the lifting. So there's the surveys, and there's the data that they have access to and collect on a regular basis. That's why they're on it, and then Christina is the greater community connection, because they co-chairs, because they share their process.
I have a couple of questions for you, Tim. Um, just so everybody understands, basically, the, look, I have some questions about how the last couple of years have gone in terms of curriculum review, but these are questions that we can't get answered without co-chairs, right? I mean, the board is effectively...
So technically, especially with the new bylaws that we've created for the FD, they technically do not have any chairs at the moment, because the terms, when Katie was here, a month, a few months ago, was her last, and so there really hasn't been anyone in the seat. Um, and so we overlooked this, when we had the bylaws, we should have gotten through it at the same time. Um, so right now, there isn't anyone, so we need to have someone put into place, so they can make and move forward with the curriculum component which is left on their plate. Also, there are a plate of, um, applications for those who wanted to join the committee, and those need to get reviewed, and a recommendation for appointment to the board, but they can't move forward until we have co-chairs who will lead that committee.
And one more question, I believe I'm referencing that Ms. Hug was the only person willing to stay on as a non-academic role, but?
I think so, I think that is, I'm thinking of trying to wrap the conversation. Everyone seemed, it made sense to her, because she had so much experience already being part of it, so I don't think... I don't think there was anyone else who stepped forward.
Okay, thank you.
Are there traditionally three co-chairs?
Traditionally, no.
There aren't gonna be, as I understood it, I'm maybe to explore, I would like to...
So the person, the faculty member that represents the health department is supposed to have three years of teaching experience before they can officially be a Sex Ed Advisory Board co-chair. Um, Gabe was kind of, he was Mr. House's student teacher, and he is the person who are kind of, you know, shaping up to be that co-chair role. Uh, however, he hasn't been teaching for three years yet. So Sean and, um, Sean Larson, who's our middle school health teacher, said he would continue to come to the meetings and, and share that role, with ultimately the goal being that Gabe would take over since he's our high school teacher.
So, he's not eligible to be a co-chair, this memo says we're gonna appoint him as a co-chair?
I think the right way to say that would be, um, we have to have someone who has at least three years of teaching experience in the health department, of which Sean has. So, so they are sharing that role, but that three-year requirement is being satisfied by Sean.
So one of the co-chairs has to have three years, not all?
I understand that, but the, this is semantics maybe, but what we're agreeing to, and I don't know either one of these individuals, so I'm just looking at what we're gonna approve, is that or not, um, that they'll be recommended as Mount Pleasant Public Schools Sex Ed Advisory Board co-chairs. So even though he's not eligible, we're saying that he's a co-chair.
Yeah, I, I'm a little concerned about that too. It seems to me like we would appoint one now with the understanding that someone else might be stepping in later. I don't know that we can appoint someone who doesn't have the requirements, but...
But also, the bylaws do not limit the number of co-chairs.
Yeah, so my understanding is that one of the co-chairs has to have three years, not all?
Okay.
And there's no limit on how many co-chairs. And so we not, if, we would violate if Sean wasn't, that's my understanding of the policies, of the bylaws that we approved, is that if there's no Sean, then the only teaching, health teacher doesn't have three years, so that doesn't work.
Okay.
And we can do either Christina and Sean, and not violate anything, well, all three and not violate anything.
Okay.
And we follow our bylaws with this, um...
Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, I understand, I'm aware.
And, and the three-year requirement is a state law?
Correct.
But it's not a bylaw?
Right, so, thank you for explaining that, then.
Can I ask one more question? Um, how much longer probably it has this three years on?
I think this is only year two.
This is year two for him?
Just starting. It feels like he was with us longer, because as a student teacher, he attended all of our meetings and was actively involved, but really, it's, this is year two coming up.
So we need, oh, we don't, it don't mean to rush us. Need a motion to approve the Sex Ed Advisory Board co-chairs.
Make a motion to approve the three co-chairs. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. So our, my understanding is that whenever, now that they have co-chairs, they can need go through applications, and then I think we have to write the, um, appointees, and that includes our student appointees as well.
And there are applicants for both of those schools?
Yep. Okay, so I look forward to seeing, um, the recommendations for appointees. We have, uh, next, new hires. Yes, we are excited to welcome several individuals. We have Morgan Christensen joining Special Education at Gannett Elementary, Chris, Christina DeAngelis, Senior Survival at Mount Pleasant High School, Joel Marchando for Digital Media, G I Tech, Jasmine Maxson, GSRP teacher in Rosebush, Jolene Pelton, GSRP T T teacher in Models, and Kate Schaefer, Machine Trades at G I Tech.
I wanted to mention too, that I think that, um, I did not give you resume details for Morgan, so I'll, I'll make sure I go in and add those. And she also is, um, she's been working with Mount Pleasant Public Schools as a paraprofessional, and she's one of our first talent-together hires. So that's one of the programs that encourages people to go into education, and, um, we're kind of able to hire her while student teaching, so it's a very, um, amazing opportunity to recruit teachers.
Thank you for, thanks for bringing that up, I appreciate it. Do we have a motion to approve the hire of our new staff?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, and welcome to the district.
And then there's one more new hire, our grant coordinator. This was a deep partnership that we, um, have been invited to be involved in, um, with the Segma Indian Chippewa Tribe as a part of a very unique project that will help, um, students, um, to, to recruit indigenous educators. And so, um, we have kind of partnered with them, we're the best working agent for that position, and we would like to recommend Alicia Haley be our grant, grow-your-own grant project coordinator.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's an exciting, um, part of hiring, is that right?
And then just one resignation, Hannah Allen is resigning from her Pullen kindergarten teacher position.
Do we have a motion to accept the resignation of Hannah Allen?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. Our new business section, which gives us some time for our board of education discussion. Anybody have anything you want to bring us, please?
I would just like to say that I was so excited to see our Transportation Department at the county fair. I love to see that creativity, I love to see people getting out in the community, and I just, I love talking to them, so, great job.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I'll just quickly share, I shared with the board earlier today, but, um, our Transportation Director has a lot of really great ideas to get out and, and get talking to people like the county fair, so she's going to be hosting a few, um, Donuts with Drivers events at some of our big group stops, at some of the larger apartment complexes, to get connected with parents and make sure we're ready to go, um, so we're, we're really excited and grateful for the opportunity to get out there with them, so, um, creative ideas, but I think she loves being with the fair. It's, it's good to talk to parents and students, but it's also good to recruit potential drivers, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's awesome to hear. Uh, I just wanted to continue to thank our schools for all the work that's being done for Summer Free Distribution. Uh, if we all look on tables in front of us, it's an impressive number of bags, I know the effort that that requires, and how much it benefits our community, and I hear about it all the time, and so I just, I just wanna continue to thank everybody for all the work that represents.
And also I'd like to recognize everybody who did the hard work on the handbooks, especially the middle school and high school who aligned their handbooks. That must have been a significant undertaking to align those policies and procedures. So, it is consistent from grade six to grade twelve. Um, and just a big shout out to those who did all that work this summer.
And that will really benefit our students, so, thanks.
I wanna, uh, thank all of the, um, the district staff that attended the Segma Chippewa Indian Tribes Powaw. Um, I know that it makes a difference when, um, our youth see our staff members engaged in tribal community events, um, so, and we wish to all of them. And then also, just give a shout out to all of the, um, students who went to the United National Indian Tribal Youth Conference. There were over three thousand indigenous youth leaders who gathered, um, Portland, Oregon at the beginning of July. They had a great time, they were able to find ninety-four headquarters, and like a lot of really cool, um, things, and it was really nice to, to see them engaged with, uh, other tribal nations and stuff. Um, there were a group of high school students here that attended, and it was very cool to see.
Thanks for sharing this. Didn't you get some kind of award at that event, Melissa? She did. Well, congratulations, then.
I think one other announcement that I was just, that at the end of this month is the People's Traditional Powaw at the Segma Chippewa Powaw grounds, and that's the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of August.
Thanks, Nathan. Nathan? And Miss Keith, we've ended our meeting, thank you, everybody.